رحمان الرحيم يقول الله تبارك وتعالى إنني أنا الله لا إله إلا أنا فعبودني وأقوم الصلاة لذكري وقال النبي صل الله عليه وسلم لا صلاة لمن لا وضوء علىه أو كما قال عليه السلام respected brothers sisters it is very essential and important for us to understand the beauty of Salaah in our lives what purpose does it give? and what type of individual a person becomes in the sight of Allah when he upholds this obligation of Allah سبحانه وتعالى after Islam, after you accept your faith or after you have born into your faith up to a certain age Allah سبحانه وتعالى forgives you for whatever it's done and when you get to an age which is called puberty bulugh that gives us certain rules and regulations to follow as we move on with our lives the immediate حكم that comes into at the time of being responsible in the sight of Allah that comes upon a believer it is Salaah because that happens five times a day the rest of the orders they happen occasionally Ramadan fasting once a year, zakat once a year, Hajj once in a lifetime if you have able to do but Salaah is something that is immediate and not a single time goes around the clock except that there is a time for Salaah right now, we are in the time of Isha and when the Isha time expires, that's when the Fajr time begins so a person is around the clock in a time of Salaah and in the entire globe not a single minute passes except there is someone praying Salaah in any part of the world this is what this حكم that Allah سبحانه وتعالى has given the believers, it serves now we talk about different aspects in the last week's Khattira session of Fajr's Khattira we spoke about the importance, the gifts, the connection of a believer to his prayers the other aspect of prayers is our way of praying how do we pray our Salaah? now of course when it comes to the method of prayer, how you pray your Salaah it varies based on narrations of the Prophet ﷺ and how Sahabah practice there are those practices that you find in the early days and then you don't find them later on, for example Al Kalamu Fis Salaah conversation while in prayers right? so you people were allowed to conversate at one point during the time of Salaah people are praying Salaah, someone comes in, you say Salaam Wa Alaikum, you reply Wa Alaikum Salaam any type of conversation that is needed to communicate with each other, people were allowed to do in their prayers and then after that, it was changed, it was removed why did this change? Why did the action that talking in Salaah was not continued? well, the scholars can give many reasons, but the real reason Allah knows the Hikmah behind it some say because it was a training process Salaah was something that was new and introduced to the world and people don't know what to do so it went through a training process where certain things were allowed and later on they were forbidden now there were certain practices that started from the beginning and then it was stopped by the Prophet ﷺ that this cannot continue another example is when liquor and alcohol was not forbidden and it was still in the process of being forbidden there was a specific order that was given يا أيها الذين آمنوا لا تقربوا الصلاة وأنتم سكارة that all believers don't come near prayers at the time when you are intoxicated, when you're drunk so later on of course this حكم was no longer existing because you were not allowed to drink and alcohol became impermissible so there were these processes that went through and in certain actions that Prophet ﷺ condemned and he said this cannot continue from now, this will continue, for example talking there is no Imam or no scholar or no jurist that says that you can still conversate in Salaah you can still communicate in Salaah with other people and everybody agrees that this action was abrogated by the Hadith of Nabi عليه السلام and then there were certain practices that Nabi ﷺ started off from the beginning and later on it continued and at some point it stopped, but there was no condemnation, there was no stopping the example of that is رفع اليدين في الصلاة when you raise your hand in Salaah now when you talk about this raising of hand in Salaah you have various opinion that talk about how many times you can raise your hand in Salaah the opinion goes كُل رفع وخفظ that in every movement you raise your Salaah, you raise your hand to only Faraid practices of Salaah you raise your hand? like when you're getting up in Qiyam, when you go in Ruku, when you're getting out of Ruku going into Sujud at this point only you raise your hand and other areas you don't to the opinion where you can only raise your hand once and you should not raise afterwards throughout the entire Salaah now the question comes in, which one is correct? which one is right? because that's the million dollar question you have people sitting around condemning each other Salaah that my way is best, my method is better than yours or my method is correct than yours but the fact of the matter is, all of them are accepted, why? because no matter when this practice was started, it was never condemned by the Prophet ﷺ and something that was never condemned by the Prophet ﷺ, it continued so when you find various of narrations, different narrations, because the reason why I'm mentioning this because a lot of times people, they think that the practice that they're doing that is right and everybody else, whatever practice they're doing is wrong the greatest example, the greatest example which happens in our community is when you come for Fajr Salaah and you have some people on the corners praying their Sunnah prayer how many of you seen that? right? and then I find people and they come up to me and they say that Imam, you should stop these people because they're doing wrong you should go up to them and tell them they're not allowed to do this and I explain to them, brother, this is an opinion in the Fiqh this is based on the Hadith of Ibn Masood رضي الله عنه where he mentions in his Athar Musannaf Abdul Razaaq that if you know that by praying your Sunnah you can join the Imam in the Fajr Salaah only, not any other Salaah in any other Salaah, you finish quickly or join, or you break your Salaah and join the Imam only in the Fajr Salaah if you have come to the Masjid and Imam has just started his Fardh Salaah you can go to a corner, pray your Sunnah and then join that is an opinion an opinion which was practiced by the Sahabah which was practiced by the Tabiun and the scholars afterwards so sometimes we don't know an opinion and the reason why this becomes a very hot topic because Salaah is a target of everybody right? and what Shaytaan does is, he tries to ruin our Ibadah and there is two way of ruining Ibadah, one is having you prayed wrong, you happen to pray it wrong or you start thinking that others are wrong and I am the only right one because when you negate a practice which is proven through Sunnah you are indirectly denying that Hadith that is very serious when you say that this practice, it is wrong and if that practice is found through the Hadith of Nabi عليه السلام you are indirectly saying that there is no such Hadith of that now du billah, you're denying the Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ, that's how serious this is that's how serious this is so now the question is, which one is correct? all of them are correct the person who raises his hand each time when he goes into Ruku, comes back from Ruku, goes into Sujud and the person who raises his hand only one time when starting his Salaah and does not raise throughout the entire time or course of Salaah both practices are correct and both of the Imams who take the opinion they agree to this, that if you pray Salaah, raising your hand or not raising your hand, your Salaah is accepted none of them say that if a person has prayed his Salaah, raising his hand, Salaah will have to be repeated or the one who didn't pray with raising hand, his Salaah needs to be repeated, none of them say that in fact, both of them say that the Salaah is right in the same scenario that I mentioned about the Fajr Sunnah both of the Imams, in fact Imam Abu Hanifa has that opinion, but his student doesn't have that opinion so in the Hanafi school of thought, there are two opinions one is you pray your Sunnah and join the Fardh as long as you can join the Jama'ah of Fajr and the second is you delay the Sunnah until after sunrise, that is the second opinion of the Hanafi Fiqh and then you have the Maalikiyya, the Shavafi opinion is that after the Imam finishes his Fardh, you get up and you pray your Sunnah so you have three opinions in regards to one practice and that is the Sunnah of Fajr prayer in the same manner, in rest of the practices of Salaah, you have multiple opinions but I don't have the right, no one else has the right to say that my opinion is the only correct one and everybody else is doing wrong rather, I should say that my opinion is correct and everybody else's opinion is correct or if you want to have benefit of the doubt then Allama Shami Ibn Abidin Shami, he mentions in his Fatawa then you can say that my opinion is correct with the possibility of wrong and the other opinion is wrong with the possibility of being correct my opinion is correct with the possibility of being wrong and the other opinion is wrong with the possibility of being correct so at this point, there is no argument at this point, we are able to practice our Salaah in the right way now, there comes a point which something something that is not acceptable to anyone and the greatest example is this and we have many of that found in our Masjid, Masha Allah Masha Allah wearing short pants and short shirts that when you're sitting down or going into Ruku or going into Sujud, you are mooning the world you are showing your behind to the whole world that practice is not acceptable around the entire globe of Fiqh if your back is showing at the time of Salaah then that's part of your Aura a mandatory body part which needs to be covered according to all or for sisters, if the hair is showing while they're praying their Salaah that is Aura according to all according to all the Fiqh and if it's exposed to an extent where one Rukun can be performed like for the entire Sujud or the entire Qaida or the entire, you know, Ruku then your Salaah is void your Salaah is finished and if you're still continuing to pray, you're just doing exercise and if you can do that argument, well Allah is rahim and Allah is Ghaffur and Allah will accept yes, Allah is rahim and Ghaffur and He will accept definitely but Allah says you do it right you learn and you do it right إن السمع والبصر والفؤاد كل أولئك كان عنه مسؤولا Allah says He has given you eyes He has given you ears He has given you intellect, learn and do it right a person's ignorance cannot be the means of his forgiveness, I didn't know because you're sent into this world to know so these are certain things that we need to understand that there is acceptability in Salaah and at the same time, there are certain practices that needs to be avoided in our Salaah and then there are two Salaahs, number one is the congregational Salaah and the other one is the individual Salaah and both of them have different rules how you're supposed to pray a congregational Salaah and how you're supposed to pray an individual Salaah because in congregational Salaah, it's not about you only there are people around you and with you and at the same time, for example let me give you an example of congregational versus individual when you are praying individually and when you go into Sujud, you should expand your hand and make a bigger gap between your belly and your thighs versus when you're praying in congregation in congregation, you're supposed to decrease it, not connect it, but decrease it decrease so that you're not harming the person next to you these are rules for congregational Salaah it's yes, your hands, your elbows should depart from your body and your thighs should disconnect from your belly but in individual Salaah, the gap needs to be greater and in congregational Salaah, the gap needs to be smaller so you don't harm the person next to you many of times you see people, they come and they expand that's not right, that's disrespect, that is against the teachings of Salaah so these are different, now everybody might have different scenarios and that's why I'm gonna stop talking and I'm gonna have you talk the reason why, because a lot of people I see that they wanna raise their hand and I will give you that chance, Insha Allah, right? but what I'm saying is, when we ask our question, we're asking for ourselves we're not asking to tell someone that hey, listen, see what he said, I was right, no, we're not doing that here we're asking it for ourselves, we're asking it for our rectification and we're asking those questions which are accurate, current, not hypothetical, what if this and what if that? because what ifs can never have a stop so something that is bothering you, something that you need to have information of, that's what the platform is, Insha Allah so Insha Allah, we're going to start from the right here if anyone has any question regarding the method of Salaah, they are welcome to raise their hand and ask, Insha Allah we'll start from the right and then move forward, so if there is no one on the right, the brothers from the middle are allowed, yes, brother تعوض and تسمية so in the first Rakaa, you're going to start off with Thana, تعوض and تسمية in the second Rakaa, there will be no تعوض and تسمية is something that scholars debate some say yes, you should do Bismillah and some say no, but the more inclination of opinion is towards saying Bismillah because you're going to start the second Rakaa with Suratul Fatiha and Bismillah is connected with Suratul Fatiha now there is a difference of opinion whether Bismillah is going to be said out loudly or quietly at the time of praying a Salaah that in which Qira'a is loudly so the three Imams, Imam Malik, Abu Hanifa and Ahmad ibn Hambal, رحمهم الله they say Bismillah would be slowly, whereas Imam Shafi'i رحمة الله عليه says Bismillah should be loud both opinions are correct, if you happen to pray behind the Imam who recites Bismillah loudly or quietly, both are practices are fine and then in the second Rakaa and in the third, fourth Rakaa, in the third and in the fourth Rakaa if you are reciting Suratul Fatiha, because in the third and in the fourth Rakaa of the Fardh prayer Suratul Fatiha is optional right? It's not that you have to recite like you have to do it for the first two so if you are reciting Suratul Fatiha, you will start with Bismillah if you're not reciting with Suratul Fatiha, you won't recite Bismillah remember, throughout the entire course of Salaah, تعوض will only be recited once when you start your Qira'a in the beginning, in the first Rakaa after that, تعوض will not be recited because you're not doing anything that is away from the remembrance of Allah عز وجل so hence takes away the mandatory mandation of تعوض away from you for the rest of the Salaah, Insha Allah so correct, both opinions are correct, if you are practicing reciting Suratul Fatiha behind, remember من كان له امام فقراءه الامامي له قراءة when you have an Imam, and remember, if the Imam is following a specific school of thought he's following a specific Mathab then at that time, you don't need to follow your Mathab if you're praying behind a Shafi'i Imam now you're not Hanafi anymore because you are behind a Shafi'i Imam if you're behind a Maaliki Imam now you're gonna pray your Salaah according to the Maaliki now you don't have to do all that, but if anything occurs in Salaah whatever Salaah that is being prayed here, it will be permissible, right? Imam Abu Yusuf رحمة الله عليه, who was a Qadiul Qudha the first student of Imam Abu Hanifa, who had a great role in spreading and validating the Mathab of Imam Abu Hanifa رحمة الله عليه he was the Khalifa or he was the Qadiul Qudhat at the time of Khalifa Harun Rashid and Harun Rashid was Maaliki, whereas Abu Yusuf was Hanafi right? they happened to come at a place and the Salaah time approach and the practice was the Amirul Mu'mineen will lead the Salaah that was the practice and norm, because the Amirul Mu'mineen was also a scholar so Khalifa Harun Rashid told Imam Abu Yusuf that oh Imam, I would like you to lead Imam Abu Yusuf said, why? so Khalifa said, because I have just done cupping and due to that, blood has come out according to your opinion, flowing of blood breaks Wudhu and according to Imam Malik's opinion, flowing of blood does not break Wudhu so I want you to lead because I don't want to jeopardize your Salaah because of the opinion that I am following or I'm practicing so Imam Abu Yusuf رحمة الله عليه said to Khalifa Harun Rashid that نحن نعمل على عمل اهل المدينة فليتفضل الى الصلاة today, we're going to practice on the opinion of the people of Medina, referring to Imam Malik رحمة الله عليه so go ahead and lead the Salaah and Abu Yusuf, who's a Hanafi, prayed Salaah as a Maaliki Salaah behind Khalifa Harun Rashid, who is practicing the Maaliki Mathab so these barriers, let me tell you, we've created for ourselves they don't exist really if you see these scholars in these Fuqaha, they were very they were very down to earth with their differences of opinion and we have to mellow ourselves and make ourselves that way because the people who originated these difference of opinion they don't have a problem with practicing the other opinion why should I have a problem? so to answer your question, brother praying, reciting Suratul Fatiha the ruling comes from a greater ruling and that is, is it Fardh or is it Wajib? Abu Hanifa رحمة الله عليه says that Suratul Fatiha is Wajib in Salaah, whereas the other Imams, they say is Fardh that's why they require you to pray and recite Suratul Fatiha even behind the Imam because it's an obligatory act for you whereas Imam Abu Hanifa رحمة الله عليه says since you have an Imam and the Qira'a of the Imam is your Qira'a, so you don't need to recite anything both opinions are correct, it's just based on how they have taken their opinion now, if you are praying behind, because remember if you're praying behind a Shafi'i or a Maaliki or a Hambali Imam or not even Hambali, just Maaliki and Shafi'i mainly they will give you a pause between Fatiha and Surah but if you're praying behind a Hanafi Imam, he will not give you a pause between Fatiha and Surah because that is the practice that he practices himself right? except you will find some of the Imams who actually do that regardless of what opinion they follow to give time to those who follow that specific opinion to recite Al Fatiha but if you're praying behind an Imam who is not giving you time of Al Fatiha while you're reciting between the Fatiha and Surah, you don't have to recite your Salaah will still be valid because you're praying behind the Imam who's a Hanafi, now your Salaah is according to that so yes, if you have time and you follow that specific Mathab no, if you don't have time, you're praying behind the Imam who's a Hanafi, your Salaah will still be valid, Insha Allah yes? good question, how much can you move in Salaah? you cannot take more than two steps and you cannot move your chest from the Qiblah these are the two main criteria if you have changed your chest from the Qiblah, your Salaah is broken if you have taken three consecutive steps and moving on to the fourth one then your Salaah is broken, you have to restart your Salaah if you can do movements while you are praying and it's a necessity movement then then you can only do to an extent where it doesn't occupy you to the amount of time in which three Subhanallah can be recited. So let's say if I have to fix my mic, okay? Subhanallah, 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 that's it. If I go more than that, then Salaah will be invalid. That's number one. Only that much amount of time in which three Subhanallah can be recited, you can be occupied in doing something else. And let's say if I wanna do it again, then I have to pause. How much of a pause? The Ulama say, now this one Rukun is over. You can only occupy yourself to certain extent in one Rukun, in the amount of three Subhanallah. After that, you have to wait for the next Rukun to come. So now, if I wanna move this mic again, I gotta wait till I go into Ruku, and then I can start moving. Right? Only to that amount of time in which I can say Subhanallah thrice. And then I gotta move it again, so I have to wait until I go back into Sujud, and then I can move. If I move it more than that in one Rukun, then my Salaah will be voided. I have to restart my Salaah. Yes? No, you just continue, because again, this will apply to the same ruling. Okay? You're allowed to recite when there is a pause. When the Imam is reciting, you shouldn't recite anymore. Right? Again, if the Imam is a Hanafi, and you are following the Hanafi Imam, his Qira'a is your Qira'a, and you don't have to worry about reciting anything. Because Imam Abu Hanifa, rahmatullah alaihi wasallam, says "Al-imamu zamin." Imam is irresponsible. What he does, he collects the Salaah of all the Musallees, and he packs it up, and then he puts it in front of him, and then he takes it to Allah, subhanahu wa ta'ala. So, any mistakes that you've done, it's not going to count as long as the Imam is not doing a mistake. And when Imam does a mistake, regardless if you did your mistake or you didn't do your mistake, still you have to make up for that mistake, because Imam made a mistake. Now, the other Imams, the other scholars, they say that every person is praying of their own. You're praying in congregation, but there is no concept of Imam being the responsible, and you are just following him. You are on your own, you are on your own, to the extent that if Imam has prayed his Salaah without Wudhu, and you prayed your Salaah with Wudhu, your Salaah will be valid, although Imam's Salaah is not valid. So that's where the opinion differs. So coming back to your question, if you're praying behind the Hanafi Imam, don't worry about it. Now, if you have gone into a Imam that is following a specific Madhab, which requires Al-Fatiha, then you have to recite Al-Fatiha at any given time, whether you do it in Ruku, even up to Ruku, you can recite Al-Fatiha, because Ruku is part of your Raka'ah. And when you finish your Ruku, then your Raka'ah is done. So that's how you will separate between the two. Now, let's say if you don't know what the Imam is following, you don't know his Madhab, right? Then you just follow what you're practicing. If you're behind the Imam, and you follow the Hanafi school of thought, who doesn't do Qira'a behind the Imam, Fabiha, continue with that. At that time, you don't need to worry about anything. Your Salaah will be valid. Yes? Correct. It is not allowed, it is required. It is required for you to walk in your prayer. Remember, completion of Saf, it can invalidate two rulings. The first ruling is, you can't walk in Salaah, but to complete a Saf, you can. And the second ruling is, you can walk in front of someone else to complete the Saf. So let's say if there is a brother praying Sunnah here, and the Imam started Iqamah. So now, everybody is keeping a gap in front of him, because they don't wanna walk. No, you walk in front of him, and you complete the Saf. Why? Because completing the Saf is more important than walking in front of him. Walking in front of him is lesser, and completing the Saf is more. So you walk in front of him, and you complete the Saf. These, completing of Saf avoids many of the situation, takes it away from its normal ruling. Why? Because completing the Saf, it's a very important task. If the Saf has gaps, then it's very, very difficult for that Salaah to be accepted. Very difficult for that prayer to be accepted. And the Prophet ﷺ, in fact, he used to hit, there is a Riwaayah in Muatah Imam Malik, we in fact read that Riwaayah a couple of days ago in our class, that the Prophet ﷺ used to walk with the stick in his hand. And if anybody is not making his Saf right, he used to tap. He used to tap on their toes or on their heels, to make your Saf right, make your Saf right. And he would walk from one side to the other side, and he would tap. And he would not start Salaah until the entire Saf is right. So the Saf is very important. You cannot compromise it. If you see a gap in front of you, and you've already started your Salaah, you take a step or two to fill in that gap. Insha Allah. Yes? So if you are praying behind the Imam, then you don't need to stop him. And if you're praying individually, then you can. Okay? Then you raise, remember one thing. There is a difference between what area you're praying in. Right? And now, mashallah, Allah gave you such a nice brain, you stand in the corridor, and you start praying there, which is a passageway of everybody going past, going away, going from there. At that time, you're gonna start having a fight. People are gonna go in front, because at that time, the person who's crossing you, he's not at fault. You are at fault. So even his sin, you're getting, because you chose a wrong spot to stand and pray. Aqaldeen Allah ne, Allah has given you brains, so use it. Where are you gonna pray? If I'm gonna pray my Sunnah, and I stand right there where the door is, a lot of times, people do that in Jumu'ah. Right? They stand right at the door, and they're praying their Sunnah. This is wrong. And if someone passes you, you're gonna get the sin, not him, because you're not supposed to stand on passageway. If you wanna pray your Sunnah, move away, go to a place, go behind a wall or something, there is so much space. But you wanna pray exactly the same spot where there is, people are walking past, then that's not right. So if you're praying behind the Imam, the Sutra of the Imam is everybody's Sutra. Okay? So let's say if someone comes, and he sees from the corner that there is a space here empty, and no one is filling that up, he's allowed to walk in front of everybody and stand there. He can do that. Because when Imam has a Sutra, the Muqtades don't need a Sutra. Okay? Now, if you are praying in a place where there is a, like this Masjid, this is called Masjidul Kabeer. What is the difference between Masjidul Kabeer and Masjidul Sahir? Masjidul Kabeer is a Masjid which is more than 20 feet by 20 feet. Any Masjid that is more than 20 feet by 20 feet is Masjidul Kabeer. And any Masjid that is less than 20 feet by 20 feet, that is called Masjidul Sahir. When you are in Masjidul Kabeer, then you can leave the space of the Sajda where that person is praying, and then go from the second row. Some scholars say, you give a gap of one row, so go from the third row. But up to the second row, you're allowed to go, leaving the area where the person is praying, leaving his Sajda area, because now, the ruling changes. It's a long area. So that area where he is praying, that is only confined. The rest of it is no longer that a person needs to worry about. So you can go on that side or this side, it's perfectly fine, just not from the area where this person is praying. And let's say if you want to exit, and there is a person praying behind you. Okay? At that time, you stop, and you let everybody go. Right? Everybody leaves, everybody leaves, everybody leaves. You're standing behind the person who is praying, in front of the person who's praying. Now, when everybody leaves, now you have to go, how are you going to go? So the last person, he comes up, and he stands in front of you or behind you, and then you go, and then he can go, because he's not doing Murur. Murur means to pass in front of the Musalli from this area to this area. Let's say someone is praying here. Now you pass from here all the way to here, that's what's forbidden. But if you are halfway, then that's not forbidden. So the guy who passed in front of you, he's gone. Now, he will come and stand in front of you, and you move away, because right now, he's standing there, right? So he becomes a Sutra, and then you move away, and then he can move, because he's not going that way, he's going this way. So there is no Murur found. So that's how you come out from that situation of praying. But then again, if the Imam is there, or there is a Musalli sitting in front, then you can definitely go from the front, there is no harm in that. So, the last person, he only went halfway, he didn't cross. Correct. He's halfway covering, he's not covering full. If he's halfway covering, then he can move. If he's covering the full Musalli praying behind him, then he can't move. But if he's only covering portion of him, then, then, then he can move. Then there is no issue. Yes? So, generally, any Salaah, either Jumu'ah or other, praying in the first Saf is more virtuous than praying in any other Saf. Right? So that's why, either it's Jumu'ah or any Salaah, praying in the first Saf is always more virtuous than praying in any other Saf at the back. How much reward you get? The Prophet ﷺ said that Allah and His angels continuously send their blessings and mercy upon the people who stand in the first row and pray their Salaah. So throughout the entire time while you're praying your Salaah in the first row, Allah and His angels are sending mercy upon you, sending Rahmah upon you. So you are entitled of the Rahmah of Allah throughout your entire prayer. Yes? So, in this, even though Suratul Fatiha is mandatory, but the Prophet ﷺ has said, whoever has found the Imam in the Ruku, he has found the Raka'ah. "Faqad adrakatir Raka'ah." He has found the Raka'ah. So that means, if you find yourself with the Imam in Ruku, then you have received that Raka'ah, irrespective of you prayed Fatihah or not. Right? Or you recited Fatihah or not, that Raka'ah you've got. Why? Because of this Hadith, the Qira'a portion is omitted, is no longer there. Right? So one Hadith says, you have to recite Safur Fatiha, and then another Hadith comes, if you go in Ruku, and you find the Imam in Ruku, you've found the Raka'ah. So this Hadith will overtake this Hadith. Right? So that's how it works. So after Fajr, Muttafaq Ali, you cannot pray optional prayer, except for the Sunnah of yours if you've missed, haven't prayed before Fajr, the Sunnah of Fajr prayer. Other optional prayers, you can't. After Asr, Imam Shafi'i says you can pray optional prayer, but Imam Abu Hanifa says you cannot pray optional prayer, because it's Makruu time. Both opinions are correct. So either Imam moves or Muqtadi moves. And if there is a big gap, Imam moves three steps, and Muqtadi moves three steps back. Right? So let's say if the gap is longer. Three steps means, not the baby steps. Three step means, a step which is one. So you can almost walk a half a block in three steps, you know? Almost half a block, you can walk in three steps. So the steps can be longer, and I don't think you only need partly a step and a half or two max to be able to go in front, so that people can, behind you can continue their prayer. So if there is a longer space that needs to be contained, that needs to be taken care of, the Imam will move according to as much as he can, and the Muqtadi will move back according to as much as he can, to accommodate, Insha Allah. Yes, brother Haq. I was waiting when you're gonna raise your hand. Go. According to Malik is accepted, according to Abu Hanifa is not. So, it's better not to than to. According to Imam Ahmed ibn Hambal, there is no difference between men and women Salaah. According to Shafi'i, Malik, and Abu Hanifa, there is a difference between men and women Salaah. The women Salaah is going to be more to the ground, more covering versus the men Salaah. Correct. So, it's part of the Aura. We're not talking about who wears hijabs and who doesn't wear hijab. That is a different question for a different time. But for Salaah, it is mandatory. Yes? Yes? You don't have to say Suratul Fatiha. If you are praying behind the Imam, it is optional to recite. Behind the Imam, you don't have to. Without the Imam individually, it's optional. Yes? Of course, each, each word of praise of Allah is giving you reward. It's optional meaning. So, the optional part is not to tell you, you don't have to do it. The optional part is to tell you, if you miss it, then you don't have to repeat your Salaah. That's the optional part. It is not to stop you from doing, it's rather to tell you, if you accidentally miss it, then your Salaah is still valid. No, only the Muftabihi qu'ol in Ahnaf is the third and the fourth Raka'ah is Sunnah. There is another opinion of Wajib with Hassan bin Ziya. There is another opinion of wajib with Hassan bin Ziyad as uh, Lama Shami has mentioned. That is the narration from Hassan bin Ziyad of Abu Hanifa that it is wajib. And Sahib Quduri has accepted that to be the opinion. But the muftabih quol in the madhab, it is its sunnah. No, you don't need to do such, if you don't recite Surah Fatihah in the third and in the fourth raka'ah. I, I follow the Hanafi school of thought, but not only the Hanafi school of thought. I follow the Hanafi school of thought. Right? Yes. Yes. But there are certain opinions, because remember, when you say Hanafi, it is not just Abu Hanifa. It is Imam Abu Yusuf and Imam Muhammad. Right? That is Hanafi, the three Imams together. So either you follow the opinion of any of the three Imams, you are following the Hanafi school of thought. Right? Understand? So let's say some people are following Abu Hanifa. Right? And some people are following Sahibin, who is Abu Yusuf and Imam Muhammad. Both are following Hanafi school of thought. Right? So when someone says I'm following the Hanafi school of thought, it doesn't mean only Imam Abu Hanifa. It means all the three Imams of, of the Hanafi school of thought. And Imam Muhammad was the teacher of Imam Shafi'i. Understand? Imam Muhammad, who is the student of Abu Hanifa, is the teacher of Imam al-Shafi'i. And Imam Muhammad is the student of Abu Hanifa as well as Imam Malik. Right? So Imam Muhammad, he is not just the student of Abu Hanifa. There is, Imam Muhammad actually has written a book called Muwwatta Imam Muhammad under Imam Muwwatta of Imam Malik. Right? He took the Maliki Muwwatta and then he, from that Muwwatta, he took the narrations which connect with the Hanafi school of thought. So Imam Muhammad, what he actually done, he brought the Maliki and he brought the Hanafi and he put it into one platform. That's what he did. So Imam Muhammad is the student of Abu Hanifa and the student of Imam Malik. And Imam Muhammad is the teacher of Imam al-Shafi'i rahmatullahi alaihi wasallam. So, all of these opinions somehow, somewhere, they connect. They are interconnected with each other because they are getting from the same source. So you will not see, okay, this is completely the opposite of this. Yes. You will find the opposites in the madhab, but not in the opinions. Because in one madhab, you can have 10 different opinions. In one madhab, like for example, the knees. Right? Like for example, the knees. Right? You talked about, the Hanafi school of thought is the knees are part of your aura. The Maliki says, no, the knees are not part of your aura. Imam Zuhfur, who is part of the Hanafi school of thought, he says the knees are not part of aura. So that's a Hanafi opinion. According to Imam Zuhfur. So they are all interconnected, right? So that's why if you're doing one or the other, it's permissible. You shouldn't mix. A scholar can mix around because he has the knowledge of both. A layman should only follow one. The reason why? Because if you start mixing, you don't know where it contradicts. Understand? When you start mixing, I'll take Hanafi from here and Shafi'i from here and then I'm practicing together. At one point, it's going to contradict in such a way that your salah won't be accepted according to Hanafi nor as Shafi'i. So you'll be left with zero. Because when, when they interconnect, there are certain rules which disconnects them. And if you don't know those rules, how they become disconnected, then you end up doing nothing. So that's why a layman should only follow one. A scholar has the ability to move around. So if you would like to go and move around, you should go and become a scholar. Correct. And the, yes? What kind of, so there are two, there are two categories of garments and I think we're going over our time, but this is going to be the last. So, there are two requirements of garment. One is what is needed and the second is what is appropriate. And in fact, in the category of libas, there is dzurura, then there is uh, uh, ha, there is dzurura and then there is comfort and then there is zina. Right? Zina is basically something nice you wear. And that zina, zina is the type of dressing that you should have. And that is what Allah says in the Quran. When you come to the masjid, you should wear the libas of zina. And what is the libas of zina? Libas of zina, it's a libas where you can wear and go anywhere. You don't, you're not going to feel shy, why am I going here or there? You're able to have access to anything. That is the libas of zina. So when you come to the masjid, you should have that libas. Now, the satr and the aura, that is bare, that is minimum, that is required. But if a person has, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, the best cloth, the best salah is the one which is, which is prayed in two pieces of cloth. One for the top and one for the bottom. If you can't afford two pieces, then one piece which covers from your navel to the knees. Yes, like you do in Hajj. When you put your ihram on, you have the bottom garment, in the top garment, sometime it flies off or whatever, your salah will be valid. How is this sleeveless? You need to get that checked out before you go for next Hajj or Umrah. You put yourself into another problem. I've never seen a sleeveless undergarment. Yes, but they have sleeves. How are you gonna put your hands if they don't have sleeves? How are you gonna put your neck if you're, if you, if you don't have sleeve? Anything that you wear during ihram voids your ihram. So if you did your ihram like this, you have to give dam. How does it go on? Does it go on like a west or does it go on from the top? That's it. You cannot. Because it has a body part made. Any garment which has a body part made cannot be worn during ihram. That's what I said, you have to show it to me for me to understand if it's right or not.
Yes. So, yes, you should pay the tax on that money. Because the thing is, Hajj only becomes obligatory when you have the money at the time and the time of Hajj comes.
Now, I have similar amount of kind of money. I wanted to donate to build the masjid in our parish. Should I pay Zakah on that money?
If you give donation before the time of Zakah is due. If you pay the donation, then you don't have to give Zakah. But when the time of Zakah does come upon you, then at that time, if that money is in your possession, you have to give Zakah.